I'll call the meeting into order with you roll the call. Um, moving on to item one C.
I need to look through the agenda second.
Motion in the second to approve the agenda and the objections. The agenda is approved. We're gonna move on to the only item for uh open session tonight. Which is the school perception survey. So do I like, is the one person an admin person or is it?
Um, okay, so now, oh, so we do have a couple more panelists joining us now. Um, Todd Gray is also here now. Someone is joining by phone. I think it's, I think it might be Jenica.
Oh.
And then the attendee is a staff member.
Okay, you can also touch on it. Here, she wants to try to iterate that to most of them. Um, so I'm gonna give you guys an update on the survey as I understand it. And so I did give you some of that update in email. Essentially, after speaking with Baird, Baird was not ready to give us any kind of number for the survey yet, um, without having the twenty-three, twenty-four budget solidly done and without having a good sense of the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. Uh, and so between Gus and Todd, that is what we're going to have a restated budget by the seventeenth. Uh, and Baird will be working in tandem with them. We will, we will be able to have, um, the, they will be able to produce those numbers that once our information is solid. So the goal would be to have Baird come to our board meeting next week to talk about the numbers for the loan. Uh, and to talk about the numbers for referendum, um, to have the restated, to have the budget, the twenty-three, twenty-four budget presented uh to us. And approved, we're kind of looking into the logistics of that. Um. And so today I met with Rob and Anna, Rob and Scott from School Perceptions, Anna and Kevin from Baird. And we went through the survey. It's had a couple iterations now since you guys have seen it. Not too much change except to say that, um, and we can go through it, but the, we went with that sort of middle ground tone, right? Like being, being upfront, but, um, also positioning ourselves within the truth of what it means to be a public school today. So I'll turn your attention actually to the timeline, community serving timeline.
Can I skip a button for you real quick?
Um, can I wait for a minute? That part of the. Like the related term to serving.
What Baird said about having a twenty.
Doesn't feel like it's.
Yeah, definitely. Okay, so.
Oh, that, it did just go, but okay.
Okay, uh, saying that they are not comfortable coming up with a number, he says.
Yeah.
So. You're saying that we need, so I, I think it is a rule that if we don't follow the budget, we have to reapprove a new budget, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, and so that, that's what we would be looking at on the seventeenth. A new budget to approve for this current year.
Right, so if you amend the budget in any certain, I got my correct if I'm wrong in a significant way. Um, yes, you do have to do that by a two-thirds majority vote of the board. And then you have to publish notice of that change or amendment within fifteen days, um, making the change.
Okay, so this doesn't have anything to do with the audit where we're trying to get all those, uh.
Well, I maybe Gus.
No, it, it doesn't.
Um, right, okay. So just another update on Friday in terms of what information will be coming out. And then, um.
But this is the budget, not the actual expenses technically, because we haven't expended everything going to June thirtieth yet.
Yeah, right.
I would be concerned Baird had was we were looking for the good, better, best numbers for the survey. They weren't ready with where we were at. To make that recommendation. They asked that we try to, but Todd will be working on time to come up with a twenty-three, twenty-four. Uh, I'm working on twenty-four and twenty-five. I had a little meeting with Baird today that was very, ooh, the long. I recently, I need to, uh, to deal with, uh, and then we should have a pretty good idea where, at least a rough outline of twenty-four, twenty-five. We won't have all the detail, but we'll have the, the outline of twenty-four, okay, five, so that we can then be able to come up with better, best. Good, better, best.
Sure.
Okay.
So.
That makes sense, thanks.
Yeah, and related to that was, um, just the idea that if they were to use the numbers from last year.
Yeah.
That the, the numbers they would be telling us, these are shocking that they, they, that would not be a good idea. But also because they think that we have some flexibility with our spending for next year and then, one second Taylor, and then, um, and then maybe there may be some revenues we haven't explained, so it's, should it be?
Okay. Yeah, the start, yeah.
I was just catching everybody. Um, okay, so the, the timeline and sort of where we're at with the survey, Taylor?
Um, Todd, did you have something you wanted to add to this?
Oh.
Yeah, I, I'm working on that. I, you, you probably can't see this, but this is the form I'm working to restate. Between Baird and I putting, putting budget numbers together. Um, I will probably have that to them by Monday. And then I'm going to build another, um, I guess spreadsheet that shows the difference between what you had approved back in the fall and what it should be, because I think that too. I, I, I think you're gonna need to approve both those documents to get the revised budget approved. So that's kind of where it's going. And I should have, uh, de- definitely the pro forma budget I should have done by Monday. I'm just waiting for some feedback. I am, I am out though tomorrow and Friday, but, um, I, I'm at a point where it's, I, I've got the, most of the numbers. It's just they're in handwritten form and I have to drop them into the proper DPI form.
Thank you, Todd. Okay, so because of that, um, our, this is an updated timeline and, uh, talking with school perceptions, it's, they thought pushing the timeline back may lead to a slight dip in responses. And, but it would still be okay, but it, it would still be, we can still kind of get it out in time to get enough data to analyze. So I think what might make sense is just to highlight some of the changes or the language where I think there might be, well, actually, I don't have to do that, but I know you guys just got it, so I wanna like maybe walk through it if that makes the most sense.
Should we just get, it's time to read it?
I can give you time to read it too, yeah, for sure.
Um, I did have a question about the opening.
Yeah, um, so.
I guess I'm just interested in knowing, like, this is all about, like, school perceptions.
Yeah, so I can explain what, you want, I can tell you a little bit about the meeting today. So, um, Kevin was very helpful from Baird in terms of, in terms of giving the perspective of how to share information and, and in terms of, um, how it might land, you know, and sort of how best to communicate things. So Kevin and Rob, uh, Anna had looked at their, in real time, I think they had revised to get to some of that more broader tone, right, that middle ground tone. And Anna had given them some feedback and so then we started word spending that a little bit. Um, I think that maybe there is, I mean, I, I think that getting feedback from you guys, but, um, is, makes a lot of sense. One of the things I'll point out is in the first paragraph, we had, and we have said this in, in other, uh, communications, talked about accounting errors being like the reason we have financial challenges. And for me, that's starting to feel less and less like the, the most accurate way to talk about it. You know, we know we spent money based on inaccurate financial information. I mean, I think that is closer to the, to the truth. And there was some discussion about how you shouldn't tell the community you made a mistake, but it's the best mistake because we spent for our students. We did good, you know, like. So, so we kind of sort of settled somewhere in here, which is like, this is just, this is what happened. Acknowledging it, people who are behind it, the news will, you know, it's like, and, um, but we're leading with community, gathering community input. So I'm definitely open to this first, to, to whatever feedback you guys have around that.
You said you changed it though in financial background, how you describe it.
Uh, yeah, if you keep going, then we did. So, um, that opening paragraph is seeks input.
Am I allowed to say what I see?
What do you, well, where is it in public? It's not, but it's, it's okay though, it's, we can talk about it.
Well, no, I mean, you said, wait, cause I thought you said, maybe I'm looking at the wrong one. I thought you said.
So the very first paragraph, your community members are talking about some of that language was changed.
I thought you said we were going from accounting errors to something else.
Oh, in the opening paragraph.
In the, now, okay, so in the financial background, this is okay. Got it. Okay.
So if you, it's not a lot of text, so if you can read as we go, but pause, pause me if you need to pause the process. Um.
And you're fine, yeah, okay, I see.
You'll see.
I'm sorry, I was looking at.
Yes, that's okay. Um, we did change some things there too. So financial background, you know, we wanted to show, uh, what we are doing, what we have actively been doing to address the budget, um, and to balance the budget. So, so that's sort of, that's the, that was the reasoning behind the financial background. And then again.
Cause I mean, we could say, you know, after learning of the, just for consistency.
Right, I, yes, I, I had to know that too. Yeah, what do you, what would you say?
Well, I'd just say what you said before, after learning of the inaccurate financial information. That would come on, you know.
Yeah, budgeting or financial, I don't know, right, I think that there's some.
Just to insist on what you already said, inaccurate financial information. After learning about the inaccurate financial.
Or like, after.
Oh, after the accounting and.
The consequences of, after, yeah. Or, so right now, my job, I'm kind of to be, to take some of this feedback around this mark and the tone. And then on the seventeenth, I think between now and then, we could tweak the language if necessary. On the seventeenth, when we have the financial numbers, we could approve both. Um, and then, or, or approve the survey to go and then there may be some tweaks needed. I don't, yeah, we would approve it on the seventeenth, I think, and then we'd be able to get it out.
Just one other comment. We, we're saying we hired outside of financial consultants. I mean, did, was, was it suggested we don't need them?
Uh, no, it wasn't. I mean, we do want to, we do, yeah.
We could have a little bio.
Um, so.
There's other words.
Yes, and there's a lot of words. Exactly. So one thought I, one thought I had, and I don't know if it's a good thought or not, but, um, if we wanted to increase some of the background here, if we thought that was maybe a priority, we would have to lose language somewhere else. And I was trying to think about where that might go and I think I looked at the feedback, like the general community feedback at first, um, and thought about that. Now that could be a foundation for, uh, community surveys going forward, right? That would be our first step at having that foundational information. So, so I'm not sure where that, the priority lies in that. But at the end, we do ask for overall satisfaction. Um, so there is a little bit of that. So it, then I have to go to a facility planning. And the initial thought of putting this in here was that this is the first time we would be engaging the community. Maybe we get a temperature on this, on what people think right now. Um, and I wonder, so I'm, I'm wondering if there's a world in which you cut the facilities planning information. And this is something to think about. And maybe you go into expanding upon the financial background somewhat. I have a paragraph that's too wordy that I think could be words spent. Um, that does a little bit more of a high level overview somewhere around like in June, we received a preliminary budget with a surplus. In October, we received a budget project, projecting a deficit. At that time, we, we did this. Then in January, we learned this, then we hired, and then describe and we hired, you know, more like giving, giving the, their background. Or just, you know, referencing the experience and the being esteemed as experts, et cetera. Um, and we can also say, and we hired a, we've hired an interim superintendent and did that, do that a little bit. It's just, it was just one thought I had.
No, I, I like the idea of like at least mentioning the names or, you know.
Yeah.
Because again, you yeah, like said, they, people.
Yeah.
That we hired, okay, I'm just gonna talk about the, what you wrote on here.
That's great. No, 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 I'm sorry. I just want, yeah.
Oh, because people are gonna look them up and then they see, oh yeah, they are.
Okay.
They, they've had successes, you know.
I don't think it, I don't think very many people will look them up. I'm gonna push back. I think you would.
I would.
And I think that's why, you're a great citizen.
Yeah.
I mean, everyone's a great citizen, but I think a tiny, tiny percentage of people would. And I've been looking at this, I would, sitting here right now, I mean, trying to look at this with a fresh eye, I would push back on the detail. Like this seems right. I'm sitting here thinking, I'm tired, I'm home from work. This delivers all the information I need.
What if we do, I mean, okay, also think about this as a compromise. We could have like a little JPEG. It's, you know, a photo with like, these are the highlights of the career. And then it's not, it's easy to read.
Well, here's the other thing. There is a link to our budget information in the beginning. And so that's all of our communications. So I think, um, that the main thing I think is.
You can add a word about like, extreme, like experience, expert.
I don't know if they want their names in there.
Could I just suggest that there might be some people who are not district immediate, who would be appropriate to put this in front of and ask them what they thought. So for instance, like there was an older person who had some thoughts, some questions that I believe he had conversations early on. Yeah, and he might be someone that he has, he has financial experience, but also might be a jodory.
Uh huh.
Like there might be.
It might be jodory or.
It is. But like, there might be other people who are a little bit more removed from it, who would be able to say, um, yeah, that makes sense, or, or not so much. But if you.
Yeah, I think it might be like school perceptions and if they felt like this was sufficient and they have the experience with crafting
these things and having success and understanding the predictive value of these things, then.
Yep, and with Kevin's input as well. But, but it's coming from us and we're signing it. So at the end of the day, it's like that they wanna make sure that it's, you know, reflective of that too.
I have a couple of thoughts. One is I still think it should say Parkway and Glen Hills somewhere. Nobody knows which, you know. Right. People don't necessarily know which schools. So Borved is somehow less personal. You say Parkway and Glen Hills, a lot of people in our community are gonna remember that their kids went to one of those schools and that we are not Nicolet.
Okay.
Not that there's anything wrong with Nicolet, but you know, just a different district.
Let's see, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm just not convinced, uh, an extensive man culpa or explanation of our behavior may make any difference.
No, I mean, it was just.
But I, I mean, I've gone through the same like back and forth. Obviously.
Yeah, and right, and, and I agree, the more they have to read before they answer questions too. So, um.
I mean, to me, the, to me, the compelling information is, uh, the bold stuff.
Like ass up to bold.
Right, the fifteen percent cuts, increases in transportation.
Just get, just like.
You know, that, that's pretty compelling to me because that's stuff that no school board has control over. That's, that's why it's compelling. If I put on my citizen hat, I think there's nothing a school board member can do uh, other than advocacy at the state level.
Well, I do want to, uh, try, like.
Thank you. Can you pause for one second? Is there a hand or is it?
Um, so just Superintendent Weiss said, comment regarding Ben's thoughts could.
Have, can we not put them up so we can see them?
Sure, I just have to take that one down. So let me, um. Okay.
It's, I just, I, I hate to have you keep trying to end them.
Yeah, I can, I can try to bring it up there. And just having a little bit of a screen sharing issue, but, um.
Only typed it to you, is that right?
Um, I don't know, I'm, Alison is welcome to jump in whenever she would like to. She's just commenting. Um, she, she just said, comment regarding Ben's thoughts. Could we add Gus and Todd's photos and some bio to the budget info page on the website? And then she said, since the page is linked in the survey. And then, yep, my response to Alison would be, um, it is already on the business, um, business department, business office page on the website. And there's a link as well from the budget information from the school board page.
Okay. Um. Anna, have you had a chance to look at the, um, the updated draft?
Um, yes, I'm noticing that the, the table in here, I was checking, we'll get that.
Yeah, so that was, so that's another piece, uh, that we discussed, so, um. Well, let's finish the financial background. I've got Parkway and Glen Hill. Oh, yeah, thank you. Sorry.
It, it was just on Carl's comment about advocacy. I mean, it, my understanding is, and, and, you know, Gus, Anna, if you have any thoughts, let me know, but my understanding is when it comes to dealing with referenda, I mean, once we get to the point of referenda, to be, both to have referenda, there's the difference between the school board member who is advocating to have the referendum and school board member to advocate for all of them. Yeah, and to thread the needle and, uh, make sure that when we're advocating, frankly, I think that there's some disfavor to advocating for, and I am just, we're doing here, but I just. I think it's a relevant point to point sound, which is that we should be advocating for communicating information. Make sure that it's based out there right now in a difficult way, is not worrying much about advocating advocacy and that was presented.
Oh.
I, I meant advocacy at the state level.
Uh, well, that's.
Like, we can't, we can't, uh, sitting here, we don't impact state budget.
Correct.
The only power we have is this individuality. Oh, Madison, that's what I.
No, I just want to point out that.
I hear you.
When, when we get to that point, it's gonna be, you know, I mean, it's your Baird's give it to us, uh, kind of, uh, you know, the, the top talking to about, look, as school board members, you know, you have individual, uh, freedom of speech rights, but.
Yes. Yeah, they will do that.
Fairly, uh, when it comes to advocacy, because the school board, the school districts itself shouldn't be taking a position on how to vote, only getting that information out. And I don't necessarily agree with that position. And I think that it can contribute what we're doing here. But, you know, at some point that's gonna come up and I, that was the only point that would make.
It's curious, because all sorts of legislators, you, you, you offer up those and stuff, yeah, advocate for.
But, you know, in the future, it would be nice to have more advocacy and then develop relationships with our legislators, although frankly, our legislators, they're gonna be like before us here. And, uh, you know.
Okay, so just to summarize, for financial background, uh, the feedback is to get consistent language in that first sentence, um, to add Parkway and Glen Hills instead of Wendell River Hills, I'm thinking, like, or just to articulate that.
Articulate that those are the two schools somewhere.
Yep.
We got that on the front page.
Could they be added just under the header, like Parkway on one on the left and Glen Hills on the right?
Where?
Oh, yeah, the top, yeah.
Oh, Parkway Elementary, Glen Hills. Yeah, I also wondered if our, uh, like, mission.
I do have a question about what we're saying about the state budget cuts.
Sure, go ahead.
Um, because I would wanna know what those state budget cuts are, because if someone went out, for example, I'm pretty sure the I'm, again, check, check me on this one, please. Um, our property tax levy was about thirteen million something last year. And for this year, we certified fourteen million. And then in twenty-twenty-two, our budget approved revenue was nineteen something million. And this past year was twenty-three billion.
Don't know that that was the case.
So I just, well, I would, that's. Well, so look at the number, like that one. So I, I just wonder.
All state funding though.
How, what, and that's another thing where state aid, for example, if you cut state aid, that just means your mill rate's gonna be higher.
So I can ask school perceptions if I got that, but I will.
Yeah.
I will guarantee that the, I'll guarantee, my assumption is that's gonna be another thing where most people are gonna look at this and take it at face value and not dive in.
I guess.
People is.
Well.
They're inclined to dive in.
And feel free to fact check me on that, but definitely disagree with it, but if they cut state aid, that increases our mill rate because the, the local taxpayers make up for that then, right?
That's correct.
So I just wanna know if that number they have in the survey is accurate. Because from what I'm, what I'm seeing, it's, I, I, I have no idea, I have no idea.
Which number, sure, you don't think that's eighty, yeah, by fifteen percent?
I have no idea, but based on our levies, it's, our levies have gone up. So.
Well, they would. Yeah, you're just, that the levies would go up if they're cutting our funding.
Well, right, but you know why? It, I mean, I don't know, does that contribute to our budget challenges? If, if we make up for it, if we get that revenue money.
Yeah, but this is not talking about where, this is not talking about funding from our taxpayers or funding from other sources. It's just talking about state.
Okay, I guess my only point is that doesn't necessarily mean our revenues went down.
You're saying it's a zero-sum game.
I have no idea if that's.
That's what you're wondering.
So I guess the question I would ask to Gus or Todd is, my understanding is this, if state aid gets cut and we have to make up that cut within what we levy, then we lose the opportunity to levy money, then that money is lost for things that we might otherwise have funded. Is that correct?
Repeat question.
So if, let's say we lose, and I'm just making these numbers up.
Oh, no, that's fine.
Let's say we lose a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of state aid. So we have to levy that hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to cover what state aid was already funding. That means we don't have a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that we might have levied for something else, correct?
Oh, it would be, it, that'll kind of be in relation to the revenue control, we only, the state, the revenue, the revenue control doesn't change. And they cut state aid out in twenty-five thousand, we're still gonna get the revenue control by increasing taxes to that, to that level. You wouldn't be able to tax any more than the revenue control.
Right, so, so we've lost the opportunities for them.
What you, what you, what has occurred is that there's now become a shifting that, that the loss of state aid is making the local property taxpayer here in Wendell River Hills have to pay more for the, for the same cost of education.
But if you wanted to levy on top of that, that would have to be a referendum, correct?
Yes.
So do you just want me to clarify that this number is accurate, like?
Yes, please. I, cause I don't, I don't know where they get fifteen percent, because again, it looks like our revenues have increased while state aid may have, I don't know if that contributes.
I mean, I think that there's a, I know that there are a lot of, um, a lot of school districts have found sort of the impact of state funding. Like, I know there's a lot of information out there, so maybe it is, maybe we can just find it.
And, and, and all I would say is, it's fascinating, but the revenue control, the legislature, the governor, a lot of revenue controls increase, but with no aid, or didn't put matching aid to that increase. So the tax, all taxpayers were automatically getting, getting hit with taxes and one can look and say, okay, that, that's a, a decrease in, in state aid, that you're allowed to spend more, but they're not, they're not financing. I mean, some of this can become a semantic game and it's a little more complex than just saying we lost and some of our revenues went, went up and things like that. It's a little more complex than that, but yeah, we were checking and understanding how they came up with, what they used to come up with fifteen percent.
Okay.
Todd, did you wanna jump in with anything?
Well, I don't wanna get too.
I, I just wanted to add too that, um, whether you lose aid or not, you, you, it, it's, you know, that would max out how much you can tax, but, um, you're, you're not gonna lose any money from that. It's just, it just shifts from, I mean, the, the, the size of the pot of money doesn't change. It just shifts from being state aid to property tax levy. So, but in that particular case, um, you wouldn't lose anything. It would just be a shift in how it's funded.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so we could actually phrase it as the tax per shifted to, we could phrase it as an increased fifteen percent increase for another taxpayer. Oh, I think that's what I went, I went into, I think, I, I don't, yeah, I, I don't.
I'm just saying it makes it sound like we lost fifteen percent of revenue something there. Okay.
But con, but considering what everybody's just said, this is, I mean, you would have, I'm just gonna, I'll just, I'll clarify that with you, but if it shifts, I mean, this is the truth. The state, that's, the state budget cut our funding, that is truth regardless of.
Well, it is, it is, yeah, okay, I mean, that's.
We're not saying we lost, uh, revenue overall or our whole budget decreased because of that. We said the state cut our funding. And we know that if the state funded us in the way that it funds other schools, like voucher schools or private, like, we know if we had like that kind of state funding, that we would be in a much better situation. So I think the point of it is to say the state is not supporting public schools.
I, yeah.
And it's decreasing over time and that is the narrative. And I, I, I agree with that. That's the point.
Well, I mean, what the, okay. So what what they're saying, though, is that even if state funding decreases by fifty percent. We still get the same revenue, it's just it, that's, the taxpayers are burdened with it, so I think.
Well, we also decide the ta- I mean, we also voted on the tax levy, so we look at how, then we make the, like, we're also making a decision about how much. We're willing to.
Well, but there's the limit, there's the revenue limit, right?
Right.
We have, like, we levy up to that limit, we could choose to levy below the limit.
Yeah, right.
But typically, all school districts, I would say, levy up to the limit. Now, yeah, when we pass a referendum, so with state aid, that mill rate then increases.
I do understand your point, I'm just saying.
Yeah, so, but look, I mean, what we're saying here, yeah, so now. Because of, again, if fifty percent is accurate or not, I don't know.
Sure.
Um, yeah, the taxpayers got burdened more, technically, our mill rate stayed the same from last year to this year.
Oh, but.
But that's also because property values went up.
Sure.
Um. But then, yeah, if we pass a referendum, then we're asking for more of a burden, so I, yeah, anyway, I guess that's a long way of saying yes, if we could look into fifteen percent, that'd be great, thank you.
Sure.
Yeah.
All right, so I'm gonna move on to the next piece, which is the operational referendum planning piece, so this is where we had some discussion this morning, and I think that was before the real. For people to join, but um. From Kevin from Baird wanted to push back on the good, better, best, because right now we are really working on getting. On getting our budget solidified, right, on the backend and then looking forward, and um. The the discussion was around, should we just say, like, I mean, we have options, you do good, better, best, but. The the consensus came to, we should have that one number that like allows us to maintain and and support our students. Um. And just, and that's simple and direct, and that may be, may be the best way for our community to sort of process all of this information and to think about it. Um, there was another option discussed in terms of saying, this is the number we need to maintain, do we wanna add one more, that's like, if we did extra. We could add this, this, and this, and there was some back and forth, but ultimately, it was like. Maybe what makes sense right now is just to be direct and say, this is what we need to keep going and and get, you know, get things stabilized, right?
Is there a reason you did four years instead of five?
I would have to ask, I think.
Five or were five years.
Because we're off, maybe because we're off, because we have, so.
Oh, this would, this would be the next whole year.
So, and then there was discussion around, um. Your question again, you've been the last meeting, like, do we do one number, and it just kind of like balance, you know, it kind of, it rides the ship with the same number every year. Um, and I think Kevin was.
Hmm, more from him.
Yeah, so I think, I'm not sure where this number came from, so this is the stuff that's kind of up. For, it's hard to hone in on this piece without the budget and the proposed number and the next budget, so. This is kind of the piece we need, um, uh with Todd and Gus finishing up that work, and then Baird weighing in to talk about more. Um.
So you would have a different number for each year for total amount requested? But is that what we have currently?
No, okay, so do you remember that school perception showed us, or maybe they showed us an option where it was different numbers, I don't think it would be, the first year would be. Because we're on top of the uh twenty past referendum, would be less, and then the next years would be the same number. Is what I think Kevin's planning to do for us.
That would be.
And, yeah, and so, right, um, because, and and again, it's what we've talked about, it's like, if we went for that same number every year. For uh an engaged taxpayer or citizen, we're looking at like, you have a referendum, so you're really not asking for this, you're asking for this, so it's just a way to be as forthcoming.
Yep.
As possible. Okay. Any questions on that piece?
Anything?
I just want, well, I just wanna throw out there that, you know. And and I hate this phrase, don't let the enemy of, uh don't let perfectly the enemy of good, and uh what I mean by that is. We should figure out how close we get, it gets to a certain date, above, we should be going for clarity, not affection, and I say that. And I will clarify that right now, because I'm not saying, but just, you know, see what sticks or be, you know, exclusive about it. But I think that, you know, in any budget year you make, educated guesses, and I think that we just have to get as close to reasonable number. Um, I I I think we're not going to have the perfect number, and all kinds of things change, so, you know, I I think that we should. Probably finalize that number sooner rather than later, and just run with it, and and you can tell you, this is a prospect, it's gonna change, but.
Yep.
Here, that that was my point.
That's a good point, and another thing we talked about a lot was just sort of credibility, part of this is education, part of this is we want to have credibility in the community, which is why we want. Bear was talking, was speaking to this, which is why, it's like, we wanna have that solid twenty, we wanna have that solid budget done, and we wanna have a pretty good idea of what's coming, and. Um, we need to be able to, like, these numbers need to be kind of solid, though, like, you know, they need to, like, they, we need to be able to say why we need this, we need to be able to base it on. Accurate data, so so thinking about that, but I think we could revisit good, better, best when we have a better sense, so that could be a piece we talk about next week. Um, and then moving through cost cutting options, um, so these were, there was input from the administrative team on these. Um, and again, waiting for that number that would fill in the X there, so any comments on those?
Sure.
Any comments on the cost cutting options or questions?
I think this would be another opportunity for us to insert specific school identities, so instead of saying, oh, the school, we can say Glen Hills, instead of saying elementary, we can say Parkway, just to continuously reinforce our identity.
Sure, or or say Glen Hills Middle School.
Sure.
Okay. Sure, yeah, okay. That's good. Or, I mean, look, let me see, oh, elementary school, middle school, okay, I didn't see you in three, okay. Okay, so then moving on to, oh, yeah, go ahead.
I I still think it's a good place to say, even though we don't know what's going on, these students, and and I feel it goes here tomorrow. Well, I'll 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 straighten them, and I'm just looking at whether or not. Ages have still these common two places or not, but.
Uh, well, I mean, here it says, should we reduce spending on routine building maintenance?
Yeah.
And that's not, wow, I mean, apparently.
The other cost cutting item, I assume it was left out on purpose, Anna had brought it up about closing.
Oh.
Should that be on here?
I mean, it is, it is.
But not that, oh, just have it there but not use it?
Yeah, I don't know what the the over under on that would be specifically, but I do know that the full maintenance is, is a heavy, is a heavy. Oh, okay.
Well, they used to fund that or fund eighty, and and that, you can't, no, no, that's why I said that they used to, but, um, so that's why it's becoming more about.
I guess the, the one thing I would say, the the reminder I would bring back is, only if we're really prepared to close it. And it's, it's highly utilized, so in our curriculum and in our, you know, in our.
Right, so if we're not totally prepared to close it. I think maybe that's a question that if we need to revisit this again, we ask then, I think, I would agree.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I I I would like a question that just had a, maybe clearly says, I I just have to say it till I hear it.
So.
Uh, you know, although it is funded through, you know, fund eighty, which sounds like a safe.
Oh, Glen Hills.
Do you support the, the exploration of the sale of uh.
We didn't talk about adding that question, we forgot, I forgot about that.
And 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 we weren't quite like clear on, you know, whether we did it now or like we could talk about it. I just, I I feel like, if you don't do it now, I mean, by the time we start discussing this in June, I mean, it's good to have that data.
So what would you say, would you say, should the district explore selling some of our old facilities?
Yeah, and that means, because then we don't give it to long, that place, well, fund eighty is, but, you know, yeah, I I just said, should the, should the district look into the possibility of selling?
I would, I would maybe move, I would talk about it under facility planning, because again, this piece is specifically cost cutting options, and we don't have enough information to say. I mean, it maybe, but is it a cost cutting option to sell good hope, like, we have to have the, you know, the financial data first to understand the financial application.
Well, we may know, because, I mean, you could go in either spot, really, I mean. Or both.
I mean, I I don't know, okay, I it's a, it's a good question, can we go to facilities and then maybe revisit that question? Okay, so then we have questions on facility planning. Um. I personally think the question at the end is confusing, so I wanted to just bring that back up. Uh, so it says, we we thought it was important to note, we are not pursuing a referendum in November, and then we asked, do you support the district exploring a re- a facilities referendum over the next year?
Yeah.
I I feel like it's like, are we going to ask them like in the next year or that, like, it just, to me, I could, I could see that getting confusing. Um.
I I would personally just leave this out, I I wouldn't add this, I would, I would, no, I.
The whole whole.
I didn't, I didn't do any, I would do that in a separate survey, but different, because we're trying to solve one problem at a time, right? So that's what I would do, but.
I hear you, but I also know that, well, go ahead, yeah, I'll hear.
No, I mean, I think, um, it would be a good question, get some clarity on, if we're moving our timetable to a four-year timetable, then. We're looking at, at what we would need is to just. Potentially put this off a year, right, like, you not even talk about facilities, and I think the question is, do we have that time? For everything that we need, I mean, there's some things on this list that we need to be addressing just for accessibility purposes.
If you think about this also as an educational piece, the the actual response to the question may give us some data, but it's more. Putting it on the radar of our community, that this is, but it's it's educational in terms of like what we need, um, and I think it lays the groundwork, so even if they say no. Okay, well, that's good information.
Can it be like a different color, like, can we print the, that all on white paper, the same plain paper, or something like that, so it's like, you know, it's two separate things. Because, I mean, who's gonna know, oh, a capital referendum, oh, an operational, you know.
Well, so it says to fund the project listed above, voters would need to approve a capital facilities referendum.
Right.
Our focus right now is stabilizing the budget, and we will not pursue a facilities referendum in November, I feel like there's, like, we could just even say a referendum. This, yeah, this year.
Perhaps this is an bold value item, like, we could bold this.
Yeah, bold, thank you, I know that I missed you.
Oh, yeah.
Bold that time.
Bold it.
Uh, if it was me, I would say, instead of over the next year, I would say in the next two to three years.
Yeah, exactly.
Right, we're looking.
Or more in, or in the future.
In the future.
In the, you have to say in the near future.
I, uh, my only, my only concern is, there's too much, I'm just, it's better to talk about a year or whatever, people may start looking and say, you know, what, we need the facility more than we need.
That's right.
The operation.
Yeah, that is.
I don't want to try, I mean, I'm gonna have a little concern about tying the two so closely together, yes. Could we have an opportunity of talking about facility?
Yeah. I I hear that, I think, and then we've had that advice from uh school perceptions as well, like, if you, and and other people, people who do them at the same time, I think it just happened to a school recently. They approved uh facilities and they voted down the operational, so they're literally cutting staff, but they're going to be building new buildings. So, um, okay, I I would go with in the future, I like that, and then you have. I think it's okay, and I'm emboldened this part. Okay.
I would agree with you to refer on this November, I just wanna be.
This November, right, it's weird.
In November.
This November, yeah.
And I guess, to clarify, we will have to do a facilities referendum.
Yeah, that's what it says.
I understand that's what it says, like, maybe that gets capitalized, because, like, people don't read detail, they skip over, they see referendum, they're not looking like there's two different types.
Yeah, okay, so. Okay, well, then we said capital facilities, so capital, okay.
Well, we don't, we don't need to be, a cap, I mean, we could just, like.
No, I'm just making the feedback, so I can.
We could just say facilities, like, aren't the same.
Facility.
Well, right, I mean, because, I mean, again, unless you you work at school, or like, you know, like, again, oh, this is a capital project, you know, I.
I know, I know it will add language, but maybe there's a way to to say why we're asking, or like, why we're engaging, you know how we say. We need your input to balance the budget, like, I'm just wondering if there's a, maybe a better lid under the facility planning.
I mean, so you guys really don't like the idea of doing uh different colored pages where.
No, because I don't, I actually will clarify that, this doesn't come to that like this, I think it's a pamphlet.
It's a pamphlet, it's like a booklet, electronic.
Well, it will be electronic, but.
Physical pink piece, it's like a booklet, right?
Okay, so I I see, you know, three different parts here you have, uh, what are you going to cut, you know, oh, here's the facilities planning, and then here's some feedback.
Yeah.
Those could be, be different, like, how are we gonna differentiate the three?
I will just, I would trust full perceptions to give us advice.
Well.
In terms of like font format, yeah.
Well, not font, I'm saying, like, how how do you distinguish, you're looking at this pamphlet, how do you, like, how are you just distinguishing between those three different sections?
Usually, each, each one is typically a page within the pamphlet, is the way I've seen it.
Yeah.
Provided before.
Okay.
Does that make sense? So like, as you, you unfold the pamphlet, it folds out like this, and each page is its own.
Oh, okay, I've never seen one, okay.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, I am clarified on that, too. Okay, and, yeah, Andy?
Just gonna say, one more time, I promise, I'm shutting up.
No, say it.
We're gonna be, I I don't know what we're gonna do, right, I don't know how this board is gonna react, I don't know if, you know, we think that. The sale of properties, good idea or not, be, that's obviously the start of the process for getting some, you know, feedback on that. I don't know how you sell off a toll maker, you know, uh property, without getting, you know, massive public feedback on some of that, and you could do it.
Well, I, I think we agree that the question should go in.
So the point, so, I mean.
Would you be okay with it in the facilities, facility planning, though, because I think it's long term, and it's not a true. It's not a true option right now that will have, that like, this refer would impact what we ask for in the referendum.
So you're saying.
It is a cost cutting option if it's running at a loss. In that sense, it is a cost cutting option.
But.
Um.
Do we know that it's running at a loss?
We don't, that's why I said if, yeah.
So you're suggesting that under uh facility planning, you would have two questions on.
Yeah, in blue.
Okay.
It's just not a bad idea.
I just think it makes most sense to put it in here, maybe, and I, and I know more, put it on this thing, try and figure it out, but, you know. I I definitely think you gotta ask a question, I think that or a facilities question.
I think you're.
I think we should ask school perceptions.
Yes.
To look at it, and I think it's important to add, you know, as I started thinking, a lot of people may not know what the digital facilities are.
Right.
Yeah.
I never even knew where they were until like two years ago, so there would have to be some head scratching about that, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I, it would mean something to me if it was pointed, you know, I'd be like, what are the good hope facilities, if I knew. That they aren't currently being used for academic purposes, to me, that's the salient fact.
Yeah.
I I would wanna include some baseline description of why we're, of what they are.
Yeah, I agree with that, yeah, and and as for examples, it did be the same.
No, it's good, I can bring that feedback back, uh, to school perceptions and administration, we can, we'll tweet, I mean, that's, we can tweet, yeah.
And one other thing that I just pulled from Todd, and. Keep it on.
Do not in this session, thank you.
Um. Maybe I just made myself my hand, I saw him, but this is gonna go out after Ben and I are on the board.
Thanks, so that needs to change. Uh, you know, I mean, the the, the board numbers are, uh. If it goes out on the twenty-second, people will probably receive it, but I think my thought was, while working on this, you guys are gonna be the ones to approve it. We're the ones who have been engaged in the budget work, so we're the ones who have the info on the financial planning, and so I think it should come from all of us.
If it goes out on the twenty-second, that's literally the day of change.
Yes.
Yep.
It's important.
No, the twenty-second, the twenty-sixth, thirty-second.
Yeah. It's way second.
But, but we are approving this before any will go out. I mean, do you wanna say, like, is there a way, should I, should I modi- like modify, what is it, American, American?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And I could put aside, I, or I'm going.
Yeah.
American.
Or you don't have to put her name down there, but they.
Nope.
I just want.
Nope, it's just coming from all of us, that's how I like it to be.
I would love my name to be on this, don't get me wrong, I, I don't want the, my name not on this, I just wanted to be accurate. Because, you know, uh, when Katie's here, Chris is here, they should also have some visibility and that's an opportunity to be introduced to the public.
Do you have thoughts on this, Katie, do you want your name on this survey?
Um, if it's like as far as. Like, who they should contact, yes, but it's, it's not, it's not.
It's not, it's not.
Guys, because we haven't had our hands in that at all, that's, that's my thinking as well.
It just says to.
I think you're right, though, we'll clarify your role, so.
Yeah, just as what's legal and what's not.
It's not, it's not like, there's nothing illegal about you guys signing a letter that you.
Well, but you're, yeah, okay. It's just you're stating that we are on the board.
I'm gonna change the title.
Okay.
I'll figure that out, if that's a great, that is a good catch though, cause that was discussed of different ways and, um. I thought I would, because also, hopefully you will be ambassadors for the district on your way, even when you're out, so people can still. Follow up with you, right, about the information contained in here, right? Um, and it looks, I think it's, that's a united, um, front.
I just don't wanna take credit for, you know, other credit, also, here.
All right, so moving on, no, that's, it's a good catch, um, if we move on to feedback, this is a very standard. Um, this is based on uh surveys school perceptions does, we can customize this, uh, but if we customize it, they won't, we won't have data from. Um, all the districts to compare it to. So that's the question for us, do we wanna stick with this, or do you want, is there anything here worth customizing? And I don't know if the administration talked about that at all.
Yeah, we did have some strong conversation around that and think it's um important to, to be able. Um, to gather some of this initial information with some norming to other districts, um, yeah, and making sure that we're seeing what that looks like, so we kind of know. How we can talk about that and where we can look to see to make those improvements.
Okay. That seems like a pretty sound. Thought. Okay, and then superintendent advice, um, this would be a good way to announce our, uh, new superintendent. And uh provide some. Uh, advice, and, so these are all also standard.
Yes.
Um, and that would be it. So I think I've garnered the feedback, I can do some follow up to, um, answer a couple of the questions. And then what I would do is, uh. Share a revised draft with you guys in advance of the next board meeting, um, so that we can. Tweak if we, if needed, and then the idea would be at the next board meeting to have the language, like, perception evil for us to, to say. Yes or no on the language, understand the numbers, to get to a place where. Um, well, I guess it's just gonna depend on timing, if we get some of the numbers in advance, maybe we could be looking at a. Looking at them in the context of the survey and approve it all. So. Yay for not knowing, no, it's okay, um, so any questions, any thoughts, did I miss anything?
Well, that is a disappointing, if we get the information sooner, to get approved sooner, we can set it out the week of the.
We would have to do a special meeting.
That's fine.
Yeah.
If we get, if, but we can set it up, then we don't even have to worry about.
Playing by your.
I think playing, yeah, because also depending on the, what, what, um, budget data we get. We may need time to process that, right, to ask questions about that, so.
But if we set it out that we get the fifteen that we can, then we don't have to worry about any of the, like, some, you know, someone's leaving versus, well, no, this is.
Well, people still, there's still a window of two to three days for people, they receive something in the mail. And I'll just, I'll just clarify your title, you know, okay.
Thank you, Danielle. And everyone else you had on this.
Yeah.
It's, you can tell a lot of work went into it because it's.
And that's hard to do, that's not me, that's, that's hard to do. Um, and it's still close to the maximum, like that high level of words, so, uh, yeah. Okay, now, we can move on to item three A.
Okay, you ready?
Mm-hmm.
Make a motion to convene into closed session pursuant to section nineteen eighty-five C. Considering employment promotion, compensation or performance valuation data of any public employee. Over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility specifically to discuss employment of an interim superintendent and part-time business manager. And certain preliminary teacher contracts, section nineteen eighty-five F, to discuss personnel concerns related to a specific individual, which. If discussed in public, would be likely to have substantial adverse impact on the reputation of the individual and section nineteen eighty-five one B, to discuss licensing. Of a former employee and intended course of action. There's a motion and a second to convene into closed section pursuant to section nineteen eighty-five C, F and one B. Uh, I have to do a roll call vote, uh, Andrew Franklin.
Aye.
Ben Lynn.
Aye.
Dana Bailey votes aye, Carla Pennington Cross, aye, Karen Cromwell.
Aye.
All right, we will move into closed session, thank you very much.
We are now back in open session, uh, now would be the time to take action, anything discussed in closed?
All right, here we go, there we go. First motion, motion to approve two teacher contracts as discussed in closed session.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the two teacher contracts as discussed in closed session.
First.
Roll call vote, Karen Cromwell.
Aye.
Andrew Franklin.
Aye.
Ben Lynn.
Aye.
Carla Pennington Cross, aye. Dana Bailey votes aye, motion is approved. Next, motion to approve service agreement and interim assistant business coordinator contract as discussed in closed session.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the service agreement and a draw business administrator, uh, coordinator contract. Um, voice, uh, roll call vote, Karen Cromwell.
Aye.
Andrew Franklin.
Aye.
Ben Lynn.
Aye.
Carla Pennington Cross, aye. Dana Bailey votes aye, and. Passes, third, motion to approve the interim district administrators, excuse me. Motion to approve the interim district administrators employment contract as discussed in closed session.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the interim district administrators contract, uh, Karen Cromwell.
Aye.
Ben Lynn.
Aye.
Andrew Franklin.
Uh, I.
And Carla Pennington Cross, aye. Dana Bailey votes aye, motion is approved, and, uh, we will then entertain a motion to adjourn, however, I will say that I know. Um, that we will be. When the contracts are all signed and all of that, we will be able to announce and give more details about transition timeline and who those individuals are. And now.
I moved to adjourn. Second.
On favor, votes vote.
Aye.